We have 51 rooms here. If anybody needs a loved one or yourself would like to move in, I'm the guy you talk to, I'm Kevin Throh and I'm sales marketing here. I want to get my thank yous out of the way first before we start. I want to thank my son from Walden Fire Department who brought in the chairs. Naturally, the staff here at McKay, they've worked real hard to get ready for Mayor to come in. And I want to especially thank the mayor and Kevin and I. I talked to Tom, we just had a chance meeting in town, and I said, hey, I'd like to really partner with you and do something. And he said right away, I mean, there was no hesitation, he said this is town hall. And being a marketer, you know, you're going to go out, you know, as Mayor of the city, that's a pretty good thing. Not only did he accept that, but he took the spearhead of it too. And I want to thank Brad Bridgeway because without his help, you know, he just kind of strapped everything, got everything in together for us. It was a great helping there. And then in the same token, I'd like to thank Kevin and I, when I mentioned it to Kevin, he was right on board right away. So I think we're very, very fortunate to have politicians that are willing to, you know, face the public and answer, I think, some tough questions. So with that, I think we'll do opening statements. We're going to let this to about seven or 7:30. And just kind of go through that. So, Jeff, you have anything to say?
No, I'm just here representing the board of the city, about board of the county. Basically, the executive, executive branch of the county government. And we manage all the county property, the roads, bridges, work with the city on a lot of projects, sit on a lot of other boards, such as the solid waste, ambulance board with the city, and just involved in a lot of different things. Like I say, I do work with the city on a lot of projects, as we do work with a lot of other towns, Moorestown, Fairland, Waldron, and just pretty well represent everything in the county. And here for any questions you might have about what we have going on.
You guys might want to consider the mic with the power behind you.
Oh.
Do you have a speaker connected to this, Tyson?
There we go.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you. Okay, alright. So, as Kevin said, I'm Tom DeBon, Mayor of the City of Shelbyville. Before that, I was the planning director for 19 years for the city. Actually, I was the planning director when this facility was built many years ago.
15 years to a bike?
There's no speaker attached to it. It just goes to the radio. So, would it help if I stood up? Would that help any? Okay, alright.
Yeah, just walk around, that's fine.
Alright. So, excuse me. So anyway, I've been working for the city for about 22 years now. I'm on my 22nd year. I was the planning director for the city before I became mayor, and so have been working with the county on several projects, as Kevin said. And within the last four years, we've been working together on a lot of different things. I want to put together some context that will cover basically everything I'm going to discuss tonight as far as what's going on at the city. So, as you all know, Shelbyville is primarily a manufacturing community. And so, we have a lot of industrial partners in Shelbyville. We have 11 Japanese industries, just announced our second German industry, which is around yet this fall. We have Canoff, obviously, we have Dutch industry, an English industry, a French industry, and two Mexican industries. So, we have a lot of foreign direct investment. Every day, we talk to other people who are interested in investing here as well, from other countries and from other states in the United States. And we're constantly working with our existing partners to determine what they need to be successful. The one thing that we've noticed when Brian Asher with SCDC and myself are touring and talking to local industry, and we're meeting with site selectors and prospects, the common thing that they tell us is they need talent. What that means is they need people to fill the jobs. Right now, on any given day, we have between 150 and 200 jobs available in Shelby County. And I know that our unemployment rate is what, Brian, 5.2% ballpark?
Yep.
We believe at this point, that's pretty much full employment, that everybody who is capable of having a job, or wants to have a job, has a job. That doesn't mean that they're all happily employed, but there are opportunities that we'll talk about that will allow them to gain additional training to improve their employment. So, when we talk to the existing industry, when we talk to the future potential industry, and they talk about talent, we ask them specifically what that means. And that means trained workforce. The trained workforce is no longer the job that my dad started out with in General Motors, or my mom on the Burr bench in Cummins, where they stood in one place, and they took one piece, and they drowned the edges off of it, and they put it here. Those jobs have by and large gone away. And if you've toured into the industry, which I've toured most of them in the community, and some of them many times, you see that the employment is requiring us to become more technical in nature. And I believe that all manufacturing is becoming advanced manufacturing. And advanced manufacturing requires special skill sets. Because of that, we created several programs that I've got information for, that I'm happy to hand out, but the wind's blowing and you saw it blow away earlier, so if anyone's interested, I'll hand it out. So, we created multiple programs to address the educational need of the workforce. The city and the county came together in 2012. We created a program called Project Impact with Rose Holman. What this does is this takes kids who are in the engineering trades, or in the science technology, engineering and math, and it puts them in our local industry. And we have about 10 kids a year that work in our existing industry. A lot of them are at Canoff, Makuta, which is doing micro-injection molding. I don't know if any of you even know Makuta exists, but it is a factory that is completely automated. They make tiny little bits of pieces that go in your body, or in insulin pumps, or in other machines, and they run 24/7/365 with very minimal human interaction, other than the programming of the machines. Those are the kind of things that we're continuing to see develop. So, the Rose students come in, they provide current technology through experience, they gain real world experience, and it's a mutually beneficial arrangement. And we have seen local industry hiring these people now, and they are working in our factories. The other thing that we've done is that through Rose Holman, we've engaged the kids in all of the county schools at the 8th grade level. And we're now getting them interested in STEM technology, science, technology, engineering and math. Because we want to perpetuate that skilled set, that skilled workforce down the road. It's a commodity. Skilled labor is a commodity. And if you don't have it, you're not competitive. So, we get these kids at the 8th grade level, they interact with the students at Rose through tele-mentoring, visits through Skype, things of that nature, homework hotline, things like that, to get them interested in taking those classes. The other thing that we do is we have what's called Project Emerge through Rose Holman. And the kids go to Rose for 10 days on campus, and they do a project from conception to implementation on campus with the professors and the students, to figure out how to practically apply the things that they've learned at that point in their career. And this happens between their junior and senior year in high school. And then the final thing that we've done with Rose is that we have Rose Holman Ventures. And Rose Holman Ventures is a rapid prototype technology or process improvement that they do as their for-profit arm. And we buy blocks of time and use those as incentives to existing industry and for prospective industry. Canoff is on their second project, we've had other companies using it as well, and we offer it as an incentive to any project, or any program, or any prospect that is coming to Shelbyville. So, we decided at this point that we had a pretty good start on the technical scale of things moving forward in the workforce, and we started looking at other needs in the community. We sat down with Ivy Tech, who has been a partner with us for many years now, and you've seen the building out at Intelliplex. At one time, we had the fastest growing Ivy Tech in central Indiana, and we started talking to them about their advanced manufacturing curriculum. So, we sat down with them and we pulled together eight to 10 local industries, and we asked them, your existing workforce, what are they short on? It was programmable logic controllers, mechatronics, fluid dynamics, things like that, that they didn't have the skill set for, manufacturing maintenance, things of that nature. So, we developed a curriculum with Ivy Tech to address that need, and we started shopping it through the vocational school. Again, the vocational school serves every school in the county. Through that partnership, we've now got a large number of our kids going through that program, and we open it up in the evenings to adults. So, if there are those people out there who are underemployed, they can now go through this new advanced manufacturing curriculum. We wanted to take it one step further though, and we created a program called Advantage Shelby County. It's the only one like it in the state of Indiana. It's unique to Shelby County, it's a partnership with the county and the city and Ivy Tech. And what that is, is free to your college, to Ivy Tech, for any high school graduate starting with the class of 2016, and they have to fall into four, one of four curriculum, one of them being manufacturing, one of them being general studies, business administration, and there's a fourth one that's transferable. Excuse me, Kevin. Advanced manufacturing, automation and robotics, general studies, and business administration. So, what that says is they can get their advanced manufacturing certification and go to work in local industry, they can get the general studies and transfer to a four-year school, have their first two years out of the way debt-free. And we opened that up to the students, thank you Kevin. We have approximately 500 kids that graduate this May. We had 242 of those kids apply, after they went through the financial aid process and all of the other requirements. We now are sending about 70 kids to Ivy Tech this fall, and we are the last dollar in. So, the federal aid that comes in, any state aid that comes in, and the city and county aid that comes in, they're going to school debt-free for two years. We ask them to return something to the community though. They have to do 10 hours of community service every semester, they have to provide a pledge to remain drug and alcohol free, and they have to be involved in the mentorship program that's being assembled right now. And you've seen an ad in the Shelbyville News, or an article in the Shelbyville News, where we're looking for mentor partners. So, if anyone is interested in partnering with these kids, please let me know. The other thing that we did, now that we've addressed everything from 8th grade to high school, and undereducated adults, we started looking at the adult population in Shelby County who does not have a high school diploma. There are about 5,000 of those non-traditional adults who do not have a high school diploma. We're not talking about a GED, we're talking about a diploma through a charter school. We didn't want to compete with any of the existing school corporations. Charter schools immediately can be a competition that no one wants, so we started looking for a partner. We found that partner with Goodwill Industries. Goodwill Industries has a program called the Excel Center. And the Excel Center is a charter school funded by the state of Indiana, separate pot of money than the money that the local schools get, so there's no competition. And the charter school, called the Excel Center, offers a diploma for the non-traditional student. So, anyone who is not old enough, or too old to be in high school, to any age, can go to this training. So, we were looking for a partner and a location, and we found that with a company called Real America. And Real America is the company that redid the Hendrix Point Apartments, the old Hendrix Elementary School, and they're the ones that are building the new building on North Harrison Street, on the west side of the block there, where those dilapidated buildings used to be. So, the buildings that are going up right now, the ground floor, will be the Excel Center, the charter school. And it will be open to any non-traditional student in Shelby County of those 5,000 that we currently know about, and they can attend that school. They can get a high school diploma, and we're partnering with Ivy Tech again, so they can get their certifications for a career. The other thing that we're doing is we're working with a local church and some other groups to create a daycare facility in that building as well. Because what we have found in looking at the existing Excel Centers throughout the state, is that most of these students have children. And there are a multitude of reasons why they did not graduate high school. They dropped out to take care of a family, any number of things. So, we tried to create every advantage that we could to incentivize these people to go back to high school and get their diploma. And so, we have a, there will be a social worker that they provide through the Excel Center, that will help them with wraparound services, that will serve as a case manager to help them with any other needs that they have, be it hunger, daycare, things of that nature. So, we're trying holistically to address every segment of the population, and doing that as a team with the county. And that enrollment for that program will start this fall. So, as that building is completed, you'll start to see those things happening. I think there was an article in the paper, one of you two had an article about the new program director that they'd hired, I'd seen a press release on that, or maybe you haven't seen it and I need to send it to you. But anyway, they've hired somebody now. And I scooped, maybe I scooped the paper, I don't know. But they've hired someone, and they are now working to get those partners established. Alright, so, as a community, at this point, we feel like we've addressed a lot of those educational needs to meet the workforce requirement. So, then, we sat down with the local industry, and we started looking at current patterns. So, without naming names, I will tell you, and you all can probably guess which industry it is, there is an industry here in town where their executives used to be involved in the community. They used to be on the scuffy board, they used to live in Shelbyville, they used to recommend that their management live in Shelbyville, and when three key individuals retired, that stopped. And they all started moving to Zionsville, and they all started moving to Fishers. So, we went around and we started talking to the other industry, and we found out that very few of our management people in our local industries live in Shelbyville. They live in Zionsville, Fishers, Noblesville, you know, that area, Hamilton County, some of them in Johnson County. We started asking them why. And the obvious answer was, the trailing spouse. The husband or wife who stays at home to take care of the children and maintain the household dictates where they live. And what makes that determination is the place in which they want to live. And the places that they typically want to live have a lot of the things that we currently do not have. And some of those things we can manipulate, some of them we can't. Retail being one of them. And you saw in the paper where we've been having a discussion with SCDC, with the city council, about ways to boost our ability in the retail market. And we've been taking solicitations from two or three different firms to help us market ourselves to various key retailers. I read in the paper where a lot of people, or I get emails, or I get mail, that says, "Why don't you bring Kohl's to town? Why don't you bring Lowe's to town?" Well, if it was that easy, I'd do it, okay? But it's not that easy. It's not up to me. I can't make those things happen magically. But what we can do as a community is we can change our demographic. In 2013, we had a gentleman named Drew Klasik from the Indiana Public Policy Institute do a presentation at the Strand. And some of you may have attended that, and it was really the kickoff of where we, of the effort that got us to where we are today. And Drew came in and gave us some very sobering demographic information about our workforce, about our aging population, and about our future. And one of the things that Drew pointed out in 2013 was that for every retired person that we have in the community, we have four people working. By the year 2040, that number will drop to two, two and a half, because we are not gaining population quickly. If you look at the projections for the 2040 census, we're projected to grow half a percent. I think it's 84 of the 92 counties in the state of Indiana are projected to lose population. Indiana does a really good job of moving people from place to place within the state. They do a very poor job of moving people from other states into Indiana. Again, remember, this all goes to talent attraction. So, when we started listening to Drew, we started looking at our educational attainment levels, which were low, we started looking at the fact that our fastest growing population demographic was the senior demographic, and we started looking at the potential of having fewer people available in the labor force, we started looking for solutions to change that demographic. We wanted to manipulate the equation. And so, we started looking at communities that are doing this successfully. We looked at the Fishers, we looked at the Noblesville, we looked at Franklin. And I know that we're not Chicago, we're not Phoenix, Arizona, we're not Dallas, Texas, we're not Charlotte, North Carolina, but we compete with those people. As a region, we compete with those people every day. We're no longer competing with Greensburg, Franklin, Rushville for jobs, we're competing as a region. There are 800,000 approximate employees in the region, and those people are being sought after by every employer in the region, in the nine county area. And so, again, we have to figure out ways to leverage ourselves in the community. The things that Franklin have, the things that Hamilton County communities have, other than a lot of money, is place. If you go over there, they have public gathering space, they have trails, they have cultural amenities, they have things that draw people in. So, then we started talking to employers, and not the local employers. I'm the chairman of a group called the Central Indiana Council of Elected Officials. It's the mayors, the town managers, and the town council presidents of the entire metro region. And through that body, we started inviting in the top employers in the state of Indiana, the top tech employers in the state of Indiana, and the top commercial developers in the state of Indiana. And everyone to the person came in and said, talent and place are the two things that differentiate your community from everyone else. We started putting all this together, and started figuring out very quickly that we needed to change place. So, we went after immediately a pedestrian bike master planning effort that was funded by the state of Indiana through the Department of Health, and we went after that with Healthy Shelby County through the hospital. We applied for a grant, we received it, we held numerous public input sessions, and developed a bike pedestrian master plan in conjunction with a group called Livable Communities. Because we also understood that the needs of the very young and the needs of the aged were the same. They wanted to be able to get from point A to point B, either by walking, bicycle or wheelchair, without having obstacles in their way. So, that's why we started talking about the trail that's going to be constructed starting this fall, which is being funded primarily by federal dollars. And we started talking about the sidewalk reconstruction program that will start down on Jefferson Avenue this year. Because we know we lack in some of that infrastructure. So, we started developing that. The other thing that we looked at, quite frankly, was our downtown. If you go to the downtown right now, and you stand in the middle of the circle, it's the size of a football field, a little bit larger than that, and it is primarily for cars. We have done over the past 40 years, a great job of making downtown accessible for cars and not accessible for people. People have been hit on the circle, my dad was hit on the circle many years ago, in front of Chase Bank, others have been hit. When we have our First Friday events, when we have the Wine Walk, when we have the Beer Fest, the Taste of Shelby County, the number one complaint we get is the people having to dodge the traffic. If you park in the center of the circle, you have to cross multiple times to get anywhere. The other thing that we have to do is either shut down the public square, which requires action from NDOT for what used to be the Bears of Blue River Festival, or Downtown Shelby Days, which we have now, but you still have a large asphalt area that is not conducive to gathering space particularly. So, we decided to go after a consultant who was successful in other areas and other communities to help us develop a vision. So, we talked to Franklin because we felt we were somewhat comparable to Franklin, we saw what they did, we've looked at, oh, Crawfordsville, we've looked at others, and we went after a guy called Ken Reiman Schneider with Reiman Schneider and Associates. And we sat down and we started talking about the things that we were lacking in the downtown particularly. We noticed that we have a significant number of vacant buildings, and we've had several people try to jumpstart projects that have not taken off yet, or they have failed. And we started talking to them, we started talking to existing business, we started talking to prospective business, and asking them, what would you like to see in a public square? And from that, then, we developed the vision that we currently have today. So, I can, if you saw the paper, which again, I'll get to the thank you here in a second, John, but when you saw the first article in the paper a week ago today, there was a headline that said $39 million. And just like most of you, I about crapped my pants, because that is the total number of public and private investment. That is not the public investment. And John thankfully, and the newspaper corrected that the following few days with a headline that said $19 to $26 million. And so, I appreciate that, thank you for making that correction. So, the price tag with every bell and whistle is between $19 and $26 million. And obviously, we sat down and started looking at the funding for that. And the funding for that can come from multiple sources. We're meeting with the state of Indiana, NDOT, and looking at a highway relinquishment program, which is what Franklin did. That's how Franklin funded a significant amount of their improvements. What that means is Franklin had NDOT agree to give up State Road 44 from 31 to 65. It is now a local road that Franklin controls. No more trucks. There was an article in the paper recently, or in the IBJ, talking about a policeman sitting there writing tickets for trucks coming on that stretch of road now. So, we're talking to NDOT about the same process from Broadway and Harrison to 74, that section of State Road 9, to do the same thing. Because one of the chief complaints that we get from existing business now is semis and dump trucks. The building that is one public square where Prime Lending is, has been hit twice by a semi. When David Carney had his business in there, the canopy got smacked twice. The pedestrian crossing signs get run over by trucks and broken off frequently, and it's just not, again, a friendly place for people. So, we're working on that. Obviously, the city and the county councils have been in discussions with me and with the design team about potential funding, and we are a finalist in a process called Stellar Communities. Stellar Communities is a project run through the Office of Rural and Community Affairs, OKRA. It's a conglomeration of 11 state agencies for potential funding for a community over 6,000 in population and under 6,000 in population. So, in the beginning, we were competing literally with the Bloomingtons and the Fort Waynes and these large communities who chose to apply, and we are now one of three finalists. Shelbyville, Rushville, and Warsaw. So, we are working now on our submittal, which is due July 1, for the Stellar Communities designation. If we are designated a Stellar Community, that allows us then to go after funding that would additionally help pay for a lot of these improvements. And that would drive the public participation number down as well. So, we're continuing to refine that number to drive it down, because we want nice things, but we certainly understand that everything has a cost. And we want that cost to be as low as we can get it, and still get a quality development. So, that's primarily the information I wanted to discuss with you. I have handouts to pass around if any of you are interested in what the downtown conceptual plan would look like. I have handouts on Advantage Shelby County, the Excel Center, and the Project Impact with Rose Holman, and I'm happy to take questions. Yes?
What's the arrangement for a major hospital?
We worked with Major Hospital for over a year to help them find someone who would be interested in that building. And their studies through racial architects and others have determined that for any adaptive reuse of that site, it costs approximately $30 million. So, we had the VA looking at it, we had others looking at it, quite frankly, no one is interested in it. We did get a phone call from a prison. There was a company that provided medical services for terminally ill inmates, and we told them, no thank you. My guess is that will be torn down. In discussions with Jack and his board, they have agreed to build into their budget funding to tear that down and potential endowment then for maintenance of that site. But one of the partners that we've engaged in the Stellar Communities project is Shelby Senior Services and the Shelby Arts Guild. Over the last four years, we've been working with them to try to find them a place to grow. Shelby Senior Services, for any of you who attend, is cool, they have a large unmet need. Shelby Arts Guild, including the Shelby County Players, the band, the choir, all of these other groups would like some space to grow as well. So, initially, if any of you were following the paper about a year ago, they were looking at the Marsh Building. The Marsh Building was chosen because it was available, and they had a willing seller, and the seller was willing to donate some money, but the price tag on that was about $12 million bucks. So, we all kind of backed away from that one pretty quickly. We started looking at other sites, and the We started looking at other sites, and the hospital site seemed to make sense. Because we want to create a mass for the community downtown, and want it to be convenient, and want the land to be free. So as we started talking to the hospital, we're now working out an arrangement where that facility could be built at that site with a significantly lower price tag, and we're looking for other partners to help fund that as well. Yeah?
I've got a couple of questions. First, I want to comment. Congratulations to you and the committee for what you're doing, for the work you're doing. However, 50 years ago and still to today, you are ignoring a workforce group that desperately needs the life to work in Shelbyville and are also part of the pressure that some of these executives would like to rise to and scale around here. Not just what their wives want to live up there for, but their wives need one too in their profession. I am one of those college graduates who felt this year a problem that I have been driven out of this county by the mayor, the county council, the county officials, because you left the companies that come in, bring in, their top county staff, their top engineer, their top marketing, their top building resources. You don't say, "Hey, you come in and you get a life that exists, and it's next to all you're experiencing." How about having an open interview for some of the ones that are in our community? And even today, it's hard for the county or council, etc. Are there any businesses in our community also that are hooked up with some of the universities that are doing internships with engineers and accountants and your core manufacturing managers? Because that's the universities need them. Of course, you have to pay for these interns, because I've worked with the mother internship program. But that is one area that this community still is failing on, you know, in some way, applying and letting the professionals have opportunities, or even after we have worked 50, 20 years out of county, giving us an opportunity to come back to even a higher level position of which we are qualified for. And, you know, I'm not going to brag, but just, you know, I started my career with G, but to go anywhere, I had to live with the entry level, because that was it. I actually, when I went to Minneapolis, I actually jumped two levels from here to there in a position, because of my qualifications in Minneapolis and with another big fortune by my grandmother. So I wanted to, you know, mention that.
Do you want to address any of these? As you mentioned Liz, are there any other?
That one, if you want to, because I got another one.
Okay, all right. Well, as far as your comment about creating jobs for executives or for management, Franklin College is heavily involved in the hospital and other agencies, other employers here in town. And quite frankly, when I'm going into history, that's how I ended up where I am today, as a student at Franklin College. And the city of Shelbyville is heavily engaged with Franklin College as well. They have a business administration curriculum that they are promoting, promoting industry, not only in Shelbyville, but like every, you know, everywhere. As I mentioned, with the Project Impact, Rose Holman is providing those process engineers for the university, has an engineering program as well. We didn't talk about the Equine Center, but as the Equine Center is up and running and those medical professionals start, the opportunities for them as well. As far as local industry importing people, Liz, I don't know how you impact that. I mean, certainly, we can suggest it, can't compel it, can't force it, but I'm sure.
Well, I would think in your economy, when you're trying to bring them in, that should be one of the selling points.
I don't disagree.
I'm not saying, no, I know you can't control it, but I'm saying, as one of your selling points, you already have knowledge of who might be available, who might have experience that would like to come back home or would like to stay, you know, home. I'm just saying, I'm just giving you that as a point.
No, I appreciate it.
That's an extra point, a thing I run into. And then also, on the structural thing, I'm glad you're taking the traffic. I love you, Liz. However, I have issues with the, Shelbyville doesn't smart. I'm sure Shelbyville is smart. I don't like the idea of an underground parking. Some of the design already, yes, it looks nice and aesthetic appealing, but we have work parks, a lot of retire, like Grace County and Johnson County. We have a lot of walking, just aid, and some people say, "Well, just park in a wheelchair." It is harder sometimes for the walking to say it in and out of a wheelchair than it is to keep walking. But yes, people have certain heart and lung diseases, certain arthritis, but they can only walk maybe a half a block at a time before they've got the stop. And they want to be able to go to the shop. I also, what I think are we doing, it'd be great if we could take downtown Shelbyville. First, we have to do little, it's getting started, the shop and the other progress shop. If it turned into a cute little boutique, little shop, I would open three of them. Hey, I'm retired now, and I'm enjoying it. But turning into something like Cunningham, Zionsville, Nashville.
That's the intent.
Franklin is starting to become that way, little boutique shops. And I would like to see, you know, some more of that concentration. I know we're in the industry business, I'm not blocking that, but in addition to that, we need to concentrate on getting those empty buildings filled up.
That's the whole point of this exercise, Liz, because we're trying to create a place where people want to go. And if people want to go there, they walk there with their wallets, right? So we want them to, the existing business, like you mentioned, the Lemon Lane and Fishers Place and Three Sisters and all that, and we want that to be a place where other small boutique places want to go. Jed and Erica, there's Erica. You know, they're here looking at the scapegoat and looking forward.
We keep waiting, when it's going to open, and I found that river, that taproom is not open until probably September.
Right.
Because I was just down.
Four fifty, yeah.
But the other thing, we have that beautiful cloud, and maybe that, this was so small we couldn't read it, the design of the circle.
Oh, I've got bigger picture.
But in any way, this is an idea. Move that fountain out there, move it apart, out there, the Shelby County, not right sitting next to it. Make a beautiful setting, like they have in a park in Abilene Campus where I was with about 10 years ago. They have a fountain similar to that, in round. They designed a beautiful, a beautiful setting area, a very nice place for families to come out to. Get there widely, you know, in the park, and have a place nearby, just an open area where, and I know you're having concerts and stuff out there, but it would be part of that center area, it would be a nice draw besides just the sporting event in there. It'd be a place for people when they're on the walking trail, they can go sit, they can read a book along, or read, have a little picnic, or something. But that would be something that we all desire. We can move out there and do that beautiful, there's other things like flowers, but I like a lot of people, we're not happy with that tower thing. That does not fit in with the architecture and the charm of Shelby County. I'm not opposed to change, but I'm opposed to change, that when you bring in things that are real contemporary, when we've got a real nice, beautiful, the architecture in our town is beautiful. And a lot of us fought to get the LEHS to look halfway decent.
I remember.
Yeah, yeah. So, but I've got some other things I could talk to my consultants about, get sidewalks along that line. I just wanted to mention some of those, some things that I'm hearing, but I can add them.
I appreciate it. Yep, thank you, Liz.
And I think you need to take advantage of more of some of us residents that have been local. Before you go to a consult, and have him sit down with businesses, you need to get some of us seniors that have been here all our lives. Because we can, you know, I realize that some are going to say, "No, no, no, we're not going to change, it's always been this way." That was my pet peeve when I was young. But there's some of us are willing to change, original stuff, keep things, setting to what it is, and some of us have some good ideas. We've been, we've traveled the state, we've traveled the United States, we've got some good ideas. If you just have some things where we can get a little more involved, maybe notice that the site's just in Shelbyville, okay?
Okay, all right, thank you.
Tom?
Yeah, Kim?
Couldn't you guys take some credit for her first concern considering the revision to the tax abatement policy? Maintain the tax abatement that belongs to the industry, manufacturing facilities, maintain their original promise of powering so many Shelby County positions?
I mean, I think that's something we could consider, Kim. I don't know legally if we can do that or not. I just don't know. But I think it's something that would warrant discussion, because we are sitting down and reviewing. I'm sorry, the question was, if we're going to revise the tax abatement policy, could that be a condition of abatement?